Finance and Law Subcommittee come to order. Roll call, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Myself is present. First one is Student Activities, Mrs. Monahan.
Hold on one second. We're in the middle of a meeting. Turn it down a little bit, please. We're in Finance and Law Subcommittee. Please turn it down. You can come on in, but just keep the tone down, please.
First thing on the agenda for Student Activities account is to replenish the Elizabeth Pole Elementary School for $454.14 and the Taunton High School Student Activities account for $54,871.91. And please know that the large number for Taunton High School is because of the proms.
I've reviewed the activity request and everything seems to be in order, so motion to approve.
Motion is being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
Next thing on the agenda is the bid opening for the Manic Community Health Center at Taunton Public Schools. Please know that we did bids close today at 2:00 p.m. and we only received one bid. I have discussed this with others as well, and we feel that if we could, that we would like to go ahead and extend the bid. It was for general contractors and subcontractors, and so we received no subcontractors bids. And we believe that it could be more of a smaller bid amount. So therefore, we think that it's best to extend this project for the bid opening for another week and a half for general contractors where they can have the smaller bids or subbidders amongst their general contract. So I have worked with the Inspector General's office, and the only thing we'd have to do is send an addendum and go for it.
Based on that information, I think we should extend it for two weeks, a 14-day period effective today.
What other...? Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Cafeteria bids.
I'm taking notes, too. That's my thing. Cafeteria bids, as you can see in the memo that was coming from our Director of Food Services, Glenn Motta. Three vendor contracts for groceries, produce, and bid. Bread, excuse me, went out to bid for the next school year. The groceries contract, which is going to be awarded to Thurston Foods, which was the lowest and most responsible bidder. Nassif Produce is the lowest and most responsible bidder for produce, and Calisi Bakery is the lowest responsible bidder for the bread contract. As you can see below, there is the three bids that went out, the three vendors, and the bid amount for each of the items, and then the recommendation right below for each. Again, for groceries, three bids were submitted, recommended, going to Thurston Foods, who is our current vendor. Produce, the three bids there, recommended to Nassif Produce, which is not our current vendor. And for the bread, Fantini Bakery, which was one of two bakery bread bids that went through, and that is going to be awarded to Calisi Bakery. Again, all of those are the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Will the motion be in order to approve the three bids?
Correct.
Okay, so moved.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Disposal of surplus equipment requests. Marching band uniforms.
In your packet, you will see the disposal of the surplus for the year of 1996 for 120 uniforms, hats, jacket, pants, and accessories. The estimated value is probably zero, and they are currently located in the marching band closet. You attached also our pictures of the two pictures of the band uniforms.
Motion to approve the disposal of the surplus band uniforms?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Donation of safety vests.
So we do work with Safe Roots to School, and they promote safe walking, rolling, and biking among students. Eight of our schools were among the first 1,000 partner schools in Massachusetts, and to celebrate this milestone, Safe Roots to Schools have donated one safety vest for each school. And what they have asked for is they've asked for pictures of each of the schools wearing that safety vest so they can put together a collage of all of their 1,000 schools wearing the vest. So I have received the schools, which is East Taunton Elementary, Bennett, Pole, Galligan, Parker, Chamberlain, Martin, and Mulcahy Schools. Each of them have taken pictures, sent them off to me, and we have sent the pictures and also a note of thanks to Safe Roots to Schools.
Motion to receive and place on file, and a notice of congratulations or thank you was sent out, correct?
Correct.
I think we have accepted the donation. Motion to...
Motion to accept the donation, sorry.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Conference reimbursement.
Also, a memo attached into your packet. You will see that in March 22nd, 2023, a memo to our school committee or to the superintendent regarding a donation to Taunton Public Schools, request for funding, which is Title II-A Professional Development. And then later discussed on the April 5th School Committee meeting was the focus to your attention to the highlighted section of the memo attached. With that section, Mr. Jordan Velois and Ms. Anne Gigliamo were requested by the Department of Ed to participate in a high school training which was to occur in Denver, Colorado. We hereby notifying that both individuals will be submitting the necessary paperwork in order to be reimbursed. Mr. Velois reimbursement will be facilitated through the use of the FC 599 OSE High School Grant, and Ms. Gigliamo's reimbursement will be facilitated through the use of Title II-A Grant, which is earmarked for Educator Professional Development. So it's just needing further clarification.
Do we require a vote on this?
We do, so they can be reimbursed.
And this is through the normal warrant process?
Correct. It will be... Yes, they will do that, submitting their reimbursements.
And this is FY '22 or '23?
'23.
'23, okay. Motion to approve.
Motion is made to approve the reimbursement. I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Student Activities Account Audit Update.
At the May 17th Rules Subcommittee meeting, the committee agreed on the following items. And again, this was part of the Student Activity Audit Update. So as of July 1st, 2023, all student activity accounts will be converted to a general ledger account. Please know that in there, we did at first specify it to be called student gift accounts, but we've been asked by the City Hall is to change that to be special revenue accounts. So the city auditor will assign the corresponding GL accounts for each of those. All the checkbooks will be turned over, so each school has a checkbook for their student activity, will be turned over to the city treasurer, and the proper GL account will be assigned. All expenses will now go through the warrant process, so again, no more cutting of checks. The revenue numbers, deposits, will be set up by the city auditor so that all receipts are tracked and reconciled by the city treasurer and the city auditor monthly, and P-cards will be available for unexpected purchases. So on May 30th, TPS and City Finance met to begin this process of the above steps. It was decided to begin with elementary and middle schools first, and the high school will continue with their student activity procedures. All elementary and middle school principals must deliver their student activity checkbook to the Taunton Public Schools Business Office by June 8th, as we will work with the city to move all the student activity accounts to the GL special revenue accounts by July 1st. During the summer, I will develop the perimeter for using the GL special revenue accounts that will assign by the... And will align with the Department of Ed Student Activity Guidelines. So again, this is all been brought up by the Rules Subcommittee. Everybody on the Rules Subcommittee had gone ahead and agreed with all of the items listed and working with the city. We all do believe that this will be much easier and cleaner for all.
What I will say is, as far as the high school, we'll shoot for that for a year from now.
Makes sense.
We need a motion to accept the policy.
Depending on the size and volume.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what action do you want to take? Agree on this?
A motion to accept the policy.
So, just so better clarification, so the city is now going to... Explain the role of the city again on this.
So what happened is we used to have... Each school used to have their own checkbook.
Right.
So now that's not going to happen. So they will have... If they are... If a school needs something, and what they will do is they'll go through, just like the warrant process, just they'll go through and saying, "We'd like to go ahead and purchase this item using the special revenue account." We will do so by going into all the vendors that we normally have. It could be a local vendor, but again, everything will be going through.
The holder of the funds.
I'm sorry. The city would be the holder of the funds, right.
So, for example, for field trips, and there's a student participation fee. So where do we... The money would normally be collected by the school.
Correct.
Deposited into that account.
Correct.
And then a check be written to, for example, New England Aquarium.
Nothing's going to change.
So where does the money go to now from the students?
Into that revenue account, so what they will do...
In the city.
Correct.
It's the same process.
Okay.
One ID number.
All right, I'm just trying to avoid multiple layers of repeated procedures.
Actually, it's much cleaner.
Much cleaner.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if they need... Right, correct. So if there's an unexpected expense that a school may need, they don't need to go ahead and use their monies. They can come in and ask for the P-card. Again, always much cleaner.
Okay. Motion to receive and adopt the recommendations?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. And the last one is the FY '23 warrant for $1,833,208.36. We can do that, and we'll do that in the full committee.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have just two items here. Let's see.
We can... You know what? We'll take a vote on that, and then that's way it's clean anyway.
Okay, so motion to accept the warrant, but I would like to be recorded as voting present. Page 19, voucher number 20357, the amount of $999. And there was something else here. Let me take a look. A question I have, the page 29, the 8,000 fringe security benefit life. I don't ever recall seeing something like that before.
It is an annuity payment?
Ah, okay. Good, I have that answered. So good. So that's it, Mr. Chairman, approved.
So you're making the motion.
I'm making the motion to approve with the voting no on page 19 on voucher number, whatever that was. You have it?
Page 19, $999.
That's correct. Yep.
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. And the FY '22 warrant of 13,215.
Mr. Chairman, I'm voting no on that.
Okay, so we'll address it in the full council.
Okay.
Facilities update.
Facilities update is the monthly update that I had asked that the Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, produce for the school committee. As you can see from the attached report, from July 1st through May 31st, the total amount of work orders entered was just under 2,500 work orders. Within those 2,500 work orders, Taunton Public Schools occupied 1,758 work orders, which is about 68% of all work orders for the city's 58 buildings. And then, as you can see on the bottom chart, all the work orders, opened and closed, entered by school. And again, the facilities director, Mark Freitas, will go ahead and produce a report monthly for the committee.
Motion is in order to receive and place on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Can I believe that?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So voted.
(Clerk) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
If you could remain... Thank you. If you could lead us in the prayer.
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence from the members. This is for... This moment of silence is for Robert P. Hartung, who passed away with his family around him on May 28th at the VA Hospital Center... Hospital Center in Brockton. He was 88 years old, born in Newark, New Jersey, raised in Northampton, Mass. He was a proud U.S. Air Force veteran of the Korean War. He was a self-employed before pols were for many years before joining the Department of Corrections, managing the inmate mattress and upholstery shops. He also taught upholstery courses in a number of local vocational schools. He leaves a very large family. His wife predeceasing him in death in December 2014. He has... One of his son's wives is married to Dala Hartung, a very valuable employee of ours and doing a wonderful job in the tech program. And he leaves six children, 14 grandchildren, 13 grandchildren, a tribute to a long and well-lived life. And one of the things he enjoyed the most was absolutely with his grandchildren. He must have been exhausted when they all left. But we would like to keep Dala because we all know her and his whole family in our thoughts and in our prayers, and I ask you for a moment of silence for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the roll call. Mr. Pulowski.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mrs. Fagans, present. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
Chairman Greg DeMello.
Present.
Dr. DeMello, excuse me.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Student Advisory Committee report. We have Isaiah Wendell here with us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am reporting on behalf of the Taunton High School Advisory Committee. Some of the things that have recently gone on at Taunton High School include science MCAS retest for our sophomores will be coming up within this week and next week. Our freshmen took MCAS, Biology MCAS, today and yesterday. Hopefully, I did well with that. Graduation was this past Sunday. I wish... And I wish all the seniors who graduated this year the best of luck in the future. Prom was last week also. They... Our seniors celebrated prom at Lakeville Pavilion in Foxborough, Massachusetts. Next week will be finals, Thursday and Friday, which are both half-days for us at the high school. Girls' softball and boys' baseball won their first game for the tournament this week. Girls' softball has a home game tonight at 7:00 o'clock versus Franklin, and the boys' baseball has a game tomorrow at 4:00, home game. Also, National Honor Society have submitted their forms for officers for this coming year, so I wish all of them the best of luck. Thank you, and that is all from Taunton High School.
Thank you, Isaiah. Very busy time of year, a lot of proud moments right now, so thank you for your report.
Receive and place on file.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Mr. Chairman, we have public input at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation guidelines be provided upon sign-up, and individuals will be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each registered individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mayor, we have quite a few citizens signed up tonight, so I believe if they could keep comments to about three minutes or so, we'd appreciate it. And first up, we have Janet Anderson from 22 Garfield Street.
Is the microphone on?
Oh, thank you. I'm here tonight as the president of the Taunton Education Association to talk to you about the mental health crisis in our schools. And although exacerbated by the pandemic, it existed before the pandemic. In 2019, the TEA invited members of the school committee and the superintendent to meet with us in the THS presentation room. Some of the current committee members were there that day, as was the superintendent. Unfortunately, the meeting resulted in minor, if any, changes that helped us to address the mental and behavioral health needs of our students. Conversations since then have also failed to address staff's concerns and student needs. We ask for short-term and long-term solutions for the current situation in our classrooms and our schools. We can't wait any longer for some real change to occur. Since we started tracking classroom evacuations at the end of November, more than 80 classroom evacuations have occurred. Since January 1st, more than 33 staff members have reported injuries caused by a student. The problem is not situated in just one school. Every school has stories. Every building has students whose behavioral and mental health needs are going unmet. And we're here tonight to let you know that we need to create real change in the way we meet the behavioral and mental health needs of our students. More importantly, we're here to let you know that we want this to be a collaborative effort. One of the things we asked for was a protocol on how to deal with dysregulated students. We have several concerns and several questions about the protocol, but we're never asked for input on the document. For instance, it describes swearing, verbal threats, tipping of furniture, screaming, and other things as behavior that is not harmful to other students. We disagree. This behavior causes anxiety and fear in the other students and leads to an environment that is inconducive to learning. The best changes will be created when we work together and share ideas and experiences. We hope that one of the things that comes out of this campaign is a joint committee that will really collaborate on the issue and not just involve TEA members, but other members of the school community, including community groups and parents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next up, we have Diane Andrews, no address listed.
My name is Diane Andrews. I live at 163 Tremont Street in Taunton.
Thank you.
I'm here as not only a kindergarten teacher of 23 years in the city of Taunton, but I'm also a parent. I've been a parent in the city for 15 years plus, and I'm speaking tonight to hope that we will... To piggyback a little bit on Janet, we're really looking for some collaboration. As she mentioned, we have been asking for help since 2019. We feel that the help is... We're desperate. We're desperate for help, and we want collaboration. We need a village. We need parents, caregivers, guardians. We need Taunton Public Schools staff, all staff members. We need administration. We need the leadership team. We need community groups. We need the school committee. We need everyone to work on this committee with us. We need everyone to support our students. One group should not shoulder the responsibility solely taking on this task. I believe that if we are resilient enough to work together, strong enough to keep trying even when something doesn't work, we need to be able to be courageous enough to take the next steps even when we are uncomfortable. This is overwhelming. This is a daunting task, and I cannot express enough how uncomfortable it is. But it's going to get more uncomfortable if we don't do something. We need to make the progress together. We will make more together than we will apart. We owe this to the children of Taunton, and we owe this to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Lisa Benedetti, 80, Misty Lane.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Benedetti. I am a Taunton resident. I am a teacher in the past public schools for the past 20 years and also a parent that had two kids go through Taunton Public Schools. I'm also here tonight to advocate for our city's most valuable asset, Taunton's children. Right now, in our city schools and classrooms, our most valuable assets are struggling. They need our help, and it's our obligation as educators and administrators to provide that help. Sadly, I think we've been falling short. Imagine sitting in this meeting. Suddenly, one of us gets up and starts pacing the back of the room or yelling or swearing. You probably try to ignore it for a while, however, I'm sure you wouldn't be able to give your full attention to the business at hand. Then imagine the same person started taking books off the bookshelves, throwing them on the floor. You might start to get worried or anxious, wondering what's next or who's going to make this person stop. After a while, I bet this meeting would have to stop for someone to step in and either remove this person or do something. Meanwhile, the behavior is getting worse. The person might tear posters off the walls, calling people names, banging on tables, tipping chairs. I can imagine you might want to call for some help. Imagine if you called for help and whoever answered the phone told you to ignore the behavior, and maybe it'll go away. It'll stop. Say someone does come and remove the person, but sends them back in here after 15 minutes or so. Sounds silly, but that's exactly what's happening in our schools on a daily basis. When that happens, learning stops. Kids' anxiety goes up, and the help unfortunately does not solve the problem. Four years ago, a group of educators met with some of you at Taunton High School to ask for help. We continued to speak out through all the challenges of the last three years, and now here we are again. It's frustrating to think that this work could have begun four years ago, and this crisis in our classrooms could have been averted or at least reduced. But our concerns seem to have had fallen on deaf ears at that time. Very sad. We have students being transported to crisis in ambulances at an alarming rate. Even one student going out in an ambulance is one too many. In our schools, there's too much student-on-student violence, student-on-teacher violence, and students harming themselves. It's frightening. And what about the other students that witness all of this? They are just as traumatized as that dysregulated student. And we've allowed this to continue, day after day, year after year. The results of all this are now showing up at the high school. Truancy, I'm sure, is up. Assault's up. Students afraid to use the bathroom in fear. Administrators running around, trying to mitigate all of this. Very frustrating. We're all here tonight because we want help for these students and their families. Again, it's our obligation as educators to offer a safe place for teaching and learning for everyone. We need effective and timely services for students with trauma or other mental health issues. Teachers and educational assistants have been on the front line for years. Teachers and other school staff should have a seat at the table. We need to come together to create effective solutions, programs, and protocols that will improve school climate and improve teaching and learning in Taunton. Thank you.
Next up, we have Paul Budrian, I'm sorry.
Budrow.
Budrow.
Also of 80 Misty Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm here as a vested member of this community to urge that immediate action be taken to substantially enhance the amount and types of mental health services to be available to all Taunton Public School students. As a spouse of a Taunton teacher who just spoke before me, I've heard numerous firsthand accounts of insufficient mental health services available for students. When my wife comes home stressed, anxious, and/or crying, not because she had a bad day, but because she's overwhelmingly concerned that the students in her class are not being assisted and serviced properly or in a timely manner. It's truly frustrating and heartbreaking to hear. And I know that this crisis is not unique unto Taunton, and I firmly believe that this is true of Taunton. and I firmly believe that this initiative by the TEA will probably be the spark that ignites similar cries for action throughout the Commonwealth and most likely throughout our great country. Therefore, I'm here to implore the school committee administration to get on board and stand behind our students in whatever manner necessary to meet this crisis head-on and make a difference in the lives of our students and future leaders with the vital services they desperately need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Denise McQuirk.
Hi. Denise McQuirk, 183 Walker Street, North Dayton. I'm here to read a letter that a community member submitted, but she was unable to come. So I'm going to read it just as she wrote it. "Good evening. My name is Elizabeth LeBrecq, and I am the parent of a student at Letty School. My apologies for not being able to attend this evening, but I am proudly watching my son at Step Up Night. I am also co-president of the Letty PTU. I was first informed of the Support Our Students campaign by my son's teacher, Jennifer Walker. Her passion and dedication for her students is clear, as is her commitment to her colleagues. She has been an outstanding introduction into our child's school career. My husband and I are thankful to her for making our son excited to attend school every day. I hope I never see that excitement fade, but I would be remiss if I did not say I am fearful that that day may come because of the increasingly stressful and at times dangerous setting classrooms are becoming. I am sure we are all aware, mental health issues do not solely affect the individual, especially in a school setting. Each and every child deserves to learn in a happy, healthy, and safe environment. Staff deserve to work in that same environment. As a member of the PTU and active volunteer in the school, I have witnessed firsthand staff having to handle a student in crisis. These children range in age from 3 to 5. I can only imagine the difficulty of these situations increases with each grade. I am a lifelong resident of Taunton and a graduate of the Taunton Public System, as is my husband. We had the option to enroll our son into private school, but confidently moved forward with TPS based off our personal experiences. I know the school system is capable of producing well-rounded, educated members of society, but in order to do so, changes need to be made. Mental health services need to be prioritized and modified. Staff who are on the front lines and know our students inside and out need to be listened to. As a member of the community, but most importantly, the concerned parent of a student, I urge the school committee to take the words you hear tonight to heart and to action. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Next up is Tamee Tokarz Muniz, 139 Misty Lane, Taunton, Mass.
Good evening. I stand before you all today as a representative of the community in need, a community that includes students, staff, and families with pressing mental health challenges. I urge you to acknowledge and support their voices and experiences. We cannot ignore the struggles our schools face, so it is imperative that we unite to address the mental health needs of our students and provide necessary support. Let us begin by acknowledging the toll mental health has taken on our educators. Consider the veteran teacher who cries on their way home due to the relentless verbal abuse by students, the new teacher looking to make a career change, or the teachers who are physically assaulted by their students and required medical attention. It's not just teachers who suffer from disruptive incidents. Custodians are left cleaning up after such events, and assistants hesitate to cover challenging classes in fear of their own safety. Disruptive events in our schools force classrooms to evacuate, hindering educational progress and creating fear and uncertainty. We cannot ignore the students who fear coming to school, overwhelmed with anxiety and apprehension, nor can we turn a blind eye to students' safety when objects are hurled across the classroom. Every student should feel secure within our school's walls. Our classrooms should be spaces of learning, growth, and collaboration. When a student's disruptive behavior escalates to throwing objects, climbing on furniture, banging on doors and windows, and disrupting the learning environment, it's clear that their mental health needs are not being adequately addressed and other students' learning is being disrupted. Dysregulated students are desperately seeking to navigate their emotions and find stability. They are reaching out, yearning for support and guidance. I implore you all here tonight to recognize the magnitude of the mental health needs in our schools. Let's unite, pooling our resources, expertise, and compassion to develop comprehensive solutions to these urgent issues. Thank you."
Next up, Sarah Lincoln, 22 Crane Avenue North.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Lincoln. I live at 22 Crane Ave., North, and I'm here tonight as a resident, a parent of a student, and a Taunton school employee. I'm here for something a little bit different tonight than all of you. I've come to a lot of recent meetings asking for a panic button to be installed in all of our schools. I thought about maybe not talking tonight, but I figure I may as well. On March 29th, I requested a meeting with my school's principal to ask for a panic button after, at the time, the most recent school shooting. My principal immediately reached out to the school superintendent and was told that Crisis Go serves as my panic button. On March 30th, I reached out to my union president, asking her to advocate for a panic button in all schools. She immediately requested a meeting with the superintendent. They met the following Tuesday, and my president was met with the same response. Crisis Go serves as our panic button. On April 5th, my mother, a Taunton resident, gave public input here at the school committee, urging the policymakers of our buildings to consider installing panic buttons in all of our schools. On May 3rd, I gave public input explaining why the Crisis Go application is not a viable option during an active shooter incident. I also mentioned the minimal cost of a panic button router, $469. That is a one-time cost of less than 60 cents per person in our buildings. On May 4th, Superintendent Cabral asked me to step out of the meeting with members of my union and the Director of Student Services and Transportation. I was told by Mr. Cabral that a decision had been made by some of the school committee members that it was best not to air my public input. During this conversation, I was asked if I knew how a panic button worked, and the answer is yes. I'd like to be clear on what my expectations are for the function of a panic button in each of our schools, and that is not only to notify first responders of an immediate threat, but to also alert the staff and students in the buildings, giving them valuable moments to save their lives. I'm here tonight, once again, to urge you, our elected officials, to consider installing panic buttons in all of our schools. What harm can it possibly do? Thank you very much.
Superintendent Cabral?
Despite being ill, I'm going to just remove my mask. And while it is not typically our practice to respond during public input, I feel a need to correct several factors. So first of all, the reason why I had my discussion in our meeting, which you may recall or maybe have a different recollection, was because by identifying specific schools, that information becomes public and therefore puts everyone in this room potentially at risk. So rather than speak with specifics, I believe our conversation centered on speaking in general terms. So therefore, the people that you so desperately and I so desperately want to protect in this system are not put at harm's way. When we identify specific actions or deficits in our safety plans, that puts everyone at risk. So I just wanted to make those in the room aware. I would never and have never put our students, staff, caregivers at risk in our building. And after our meetings, I'll leave it at that because I wanted to clarify, and I don't want to disclose any further information. But again, during our general meetings for those in attendance and those at home, when we speak specifically about our safety plans, we go into executive session. And there is a reason why, to keep you all safe. So I just wanted to clarify that point, Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will continue with public input.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have Heather Bailey Gregorius, 16 Belvore Avenue. Number, can't read that. 16? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I have a bit of a different perspective as a speaker tonight. We heard from a lot of teachers, and I'm so thankful that everyone is here and put together this whole public awareness campaign. I speak to you as a parent, as a member of the Taunton Special Education Parent Advisory Council, as a parent of children with and without disabilities, as a parent of children with and without mental health diagnoses. And I will tell you how devastating it felt. I don't know if the school committee receives the same emails that the school system does. But when we had an event for this campaign recently inviting the public to come learn about it, on that same day, an email went out to all families highlighting the ways in the district that families and students can get mental health supports, saying all of the wonderful things that are in place. And while the things that are in place may 100% be true, as a parent who has tried to access mental health support for my children, I can tell you just because it exists does not mean we're able to get our foot in the door to get those services. A child that is neurotypical and having difficulties without a diagnosis, they can't get help. My child with a diagnosis and neurodiverse and anxiety and ADHD and on an IEP, we waited till she was failing almost everything and having Fs and Ds until people finally agreed, okay, I think that we can put something into place. So to give us a big list of all the great things that are available, I called BS. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Catherine N. Cunningham, no address listed.
I didn't know you guys would have a big meeting here. I thought I could just come in, say what I have to say, and get out. But I was trained through TIMA for active shooting right here. And the Taunton Police, State Police, put it on. You need to get trained. Put that panic button in every school in the city and then call it a day. You know, it makes sense. But I'm here to find out when y'all gonna ever honor my dear mother. I mean, she's been gone 23 years. You would think you could put up a plaque at Mokee School. Is anybody gonna say something? Oh, my mother. Oh, her name is Hattie, H-A-T-T-I-E, middle initial is A, and Cunningham's her last name. I'm Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N. I'm her daughter. Still waiting for the privileged, you know, at 66-years-old to see something to keep my mother's legacy alive in this city. I don't know anybody in here who ever picked cotton to pay for her college education, who survived Jim Crow segregation, which was worse than apartheid in South Africa. My mother was a domestic at the Dinner Bell Motel in Dunell, Florida, outside of Ocala. So she worked and she came here and she made a difference here. That's who you need to honor. She was the first black teacher. You imagine, 1968, my father's in a jungle in Vietnam, and here we are, like, where's Taunton? What's up? And, you know, we were only supposed to stay two years and go to the next base, but my mother told my father, Cunningham, this place is really, they're in need of people of color so that the white kids and the black kids could see someone in a position of authority. And so she stayed for 32 years until she died. But, you know, you guys are supposed to do something to honor her, and it's three years. COVID's gone supposedly. And you got a room full of people. I think we need Edward Castle, okay, and another Portuguese woman, and we were supposed to honor all three.
Ms. Cunningham, if I could just interject for a moment, just to give you some information. So the dedication is planned for the fall? You'll be happy to know.
They said spring, Mr. Gregory DeMello.
Well, it is planned for the fall.
But, you know, if you don't see nobody, and I usually don't come out and bother you guys. You know that. And stuff, I stay home, mind my business. I'm not a troublemaker. But thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, and we look forward to honoring your mom. And just so everyone knows, we take your comments for the record. There's not usually any back and forth. We don't usually answer everyone at the moment, but they will be taken for the record and responded to as appropriate. Okay, do we have another?
Nope. That's it for public input today.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, so voted. Can I get a motion to resume business?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're welcome.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted. Next on our agenda is public hearing for Taunton Public Schools budget.
Madam Mayor.
The chairman would open the hearing.
Thank you. So tonight, we present a FY24 budget hearing. Today, Wednesday, June 7, 2023. And the FY24 budget presentation will be conducted by Superintendent Cabral and Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Brenda Monahan. Superintendent?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. DeMello, school committee members. So in your packet, you should have received the FY24 budget hearing, school committee presentation, which also includes the line item, which also includes the line item budget. So I'm not going to walk you through, I don't believe there's a need to walk you through every single slide in the presentation because not much has changed. But what I would like to do is highlight the slides that we have added and the slides that have changed. So I would ask you to please move forward in your packet to slide number six. And in slide number six, which I know it's difficult to see, in slide number six is where I provided you with the FY24 superintendent's budget message, which was sent to all constituents in the Taunton Public Schools. So all our caregivers, all our staff, any employee who has an active email to Taunton Public Schools received the FY24 budget message stating our priorities and also highlighting our three-year approach and how we implemented our ESSA dollars and the Student Opportunity Act to support our students with regards to learning loss, accelerating learning, and also supporting the mental health needs of our students, which I'll elaborate a little further into the presentation. I also think it's important for the public and to remind all of you that you have committed a lot of time, effort into putting together this budget. So in January of 2023, under the direction of the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mrs. Monahan, our principals presented their school-based budgets to the school committee. In February 2023, actually February 6th, our elementary principals presented their FY24 budget priorities to the school committee. On February 13th, the high school and middle school principals- On February thirteenth, the high school and middle school principals presented their FY twenty-four budget priorities to the school committee. On March of two thousand and twenty-three, because we had a change in leadership at the state level, Governor Healy released her budget on March second. So finally, on March second is when we have some actual numbers, some actual projections on what we could anticipate for revenue under chapter seventy to begin formulating and actually taking into account, you know, do we have to make any changes, do we have to make any reductions to ensure that we had sufficient funding to roll over all the current programs we have in place while also continuing to add programs to address learning loss, accelerated learning, and supporting the mental health of our students. In April of two thousand and twenty-three, April fifth, the Taunton School Committee heard for the first time the first version of the FY twenty-four preliminary budget. We also, we often refer to that as the governor's budget. On April twelfth, the House Ways and Means released their budget. And on April twenty-sixth, you continue to have and continue to meet and met, I believe, for four hours that evening during a school committee budget workshop, which was posted and open to the public here in this space. In May, on May second, we presented our budget before the city council. And again, that was a televised and posted meeting, open to the public. On May third, excuse me, on May ninth, the Senate Ways and Means released their budget. And on May ninth, we had a school committee budget forum in the morning here in this space. And we had on May tenth, an evening school committee, community budget forum for those who could not attend the morning session. On May seventeenth, you heard for the second time the preliminary budget, which took into account your budget priorities and the principal budget priorities that you approved for fiscal twenty-four. And here we are, and then on May twenty-fourth, on May twenty-fourth, we had, we launched the Taunton Public Schools Budget Survey, which had over five hundred responses from parents, teachers, caregivers throughout our community. So again, you've done a lot of work, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations and her team, our principals, have put a lot of work into developing a budget for the next fiscal year. The development of the budget is a year-round process. And on the school side, we are actually juggling three budgets at a time. We are reconciling and closing the previous year's budget. We are managing the current year's budget and we are preparing the next year's budget. And this is a year-round cycle that involves many hours and many people. I just wanted to share the survey results. And again, you're gonna, you all noticed that the responses are different because not everyone who answered the survey had to identify if they were a parent, guardian, community member or stakeholder or TPS staff. But as I stated, there were over five hundred responses, so it was an excellent turnout on behalf of the community with regards to our budget priorities. The first budget priority that we asked the community to weigh in on was the Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. And you'll notice that thirty-eight percent said it was very important to have this position or to make this or maintain this as a budget priority. Thirty-five percent somewhat important and twenty-six percent believed it was not important right now. With regards to the reset rooms, which is something that our community input team, which is made up of school committee members, administrators, leadership team members, principals, teachers, members from the different stakeholder groups in our community, community liaisons, have been meeting since my first year superintendent, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, to address the social and emotional wellness of our students as well as to discuss potential new programs. And some of the work that has come about from this community input team meeting has been the recommendation to establish reset rooms to support the mental health needs of our students as well as to support dysregulated behavior that we are experiencing in our schools. And as you can see, sixty-seven percent of those who participated in the survey believe that this is a need and a priority that needs to move forward. I'm not gonna repeat verbatim what I just repeated with regard to the elementary school. But the community input team also felt that this was needed at the middle school level to the tune of sixty-eight percent. And at the high school level, to seventy percent. So again, the community input team, working collaboratively with stakeholders who are invested in meeting as a group and continuing this work dating back to my entry as superintendent, have continued to me to address the needs of our students, social and emotional wellness. And again, knowing the needs of our district, which has shifted from mental health to also dysregulated behavior, which we knew was an outcome of the pandemic, we have worked to provide those resources or place those resources in our schools. And later on in this meeting, you'll hear about another resource that we are excited to bring to the table, which I believe will be very well received to provide our families and our students with another, with another opportunity to educate their kids differently because we know not all students learn and not all students progress at the same rate or the same time. Another priority that was brought to us by the high school was a strength and athletic performance coordinator. And again, twenty-four percent felt this was important, thirty percent somewhat important, and forty-five percent believed not important right now. And the communications coordinator, twenty-four percent believe this was very important, thirty-three point eight percent somewhat important, and forty-one point seven percent meant that this was not important right now. What I will state is that all the budget priorities are included in the budget, which has the bottom line figure in the budget, which I'll mention in a few next slides, has not increased, has not decreased, it has remained the same. So whether or not you approve this budget this evening, the bottom line remains the same whether these priorities are in or whether these priorities come out. And again, just where we are in the budget process on slide fifteen, we are now in June, the budget is now, I believe, now before the conference committee or it may still be with the Senate Ways and Means. It's with both. And again, foundation budget, I won't belabor this slide because I believe now you are all well-versed thanks to the tutelage you are getting on net school spending from me and my administration. I also believe this is an important slide to highlight to the committee and to the members of the public because many people are asking, why did we see such a large chapter seventy increase? Many factors. Our student enrollment increased by a hundred and thirty-five kids. To educate each student, the state provides, to educate a student in Taunton, the state says it costs about sixteen thousand dollars. So if you multiply a hundred and thirty-five by sixteen thousand, I believe that's gonna come in a little over two million dollars. Low-income students increased by two hundred and fifty-seven students. We are over sixty percent free and reduced lunch, which means six out of ten students in the Taunton Public Schools qualify as low-income students. Six out of ten. Inflation factor was maxed out at the statutory limit, which is four and a half percent. Although true inflation in Massachusetts was almost double that. I believe it actually was double at nine point two eight or nine point four eight. But by law, they can only increase it by four and a half. Your commitment, again, your commitment, and I'll share an antidote. We are meeting with some stakeholders, with Mrs. Hoy and Mrs. Monahan, to look at best practices to expand early childcare in our city. And one of the facts that was shared yesterday is pre-COVID. I believe in Bristol County, down into the Cape and Islands area, there were over sixteen hundred licensed childcare facilities, sixteen hundred pre-COVID. Due to COVID and post-COVID, there are now approximately a thousand and forty-five. So those are students who are not getting access to quality early childhood support or families that are finding it very difficult to find affordable childcare support. And again, it places an added burden on school systems throughout the Commonwealth. So your work, your commitment to support the ESAR plan and the Student Opportunity Act, which we list early childhood expansion as a priority, continues to pay dividends as we now have seventy-three new students receiving high-quality early childhood care in our schools. Vocational enrollment, again, part of our plan to make sure our kids are career and life-ready. Ninety-one new students are participating in vocational programs, which means when they graduate high school, they will have the skills needed to attain high-paying jobs and be contributing members in our society and care for themselves and their families. And we have another chapter eight program, chapter seventy-four program, which will make eight approve, if approved, eight chapter seventy-four programs. So I believe the number is a little over eight hundred. Of the twenty-eight hundred students at the high school participate in our vocational programs. If this eighth program is approved, you can expect another ninety to eighty students. So almost a third of the high school, a third of the high school, which is nine hundred students, would be participating in a chapter seventy-four program. The Student Opportunity Act is in the third year being funded. The elementary school enrollment increased by sixty students. Again, property value and income in the community plays a role in, on why that number has increased. So again, just to kind of demystify where all this money or what drives that ten point three million dollar figure. I'm just gonna continue to skip around to the slides which I believe are important. So again, the budget that we are recommending and the budget that you have accepted in the previous budget presentations, in the budget that the city council accepted with and felt was very, was very well-received, is a proposed budget of a hundred and fourteen million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand and two dollars. Which is also a budget that reflects zero reductions in services, zero reductions in staffing. The last time we had to cut staff was due to the pandemic. I believe you've seen how our costs, our fixed costs are divided. And I'll spend a little bit of time on the Opportunity Act, which again, we are in the third year of being funded. Our first goal or our first and top strategic priority was social emotional learning. So adopt a comprehensive pre-K through twelve social emotional program to support students' social, emotional and physical health. And it also has strategic alignment to our plan. It aligns with strategic priority one and strategic priority two. Many of the steps in our action plan have been completed or remain ongoing. Evidence, we have purchased and implemented a social emotional learning curriculum and we hired eight team chairs. Those eight team chairs allow our guidance counselors to work and support our students with regards to their social emotional health in our schools. Because now those guidance counselors do not have to chair team meetings. A hundred percent of their day can be spent assisting our kids. That is a financial commitment on behalf of your part and something that we began funding prior to the Student Opportunity Act, because we identified this as a need. Reducing class sizes, we know that students learn better in small class settings. And you have, year after year, you have supported small class sizes. And the data proves it. And again, it remains in process. Early college pathways, very important and we continue to make gains in that area. And expanding pre-K, which I already elaborated on. And last but not least, our ESAR plans and how we have funded or utilized those ESAR dollars in a very thoughtful way so that we do not hit a funding cliff. The last thing I think you want to hear from me as the superintendent and Mrs. Monahan, as the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, is that we grew or expanded too fast and had to make reductions like many communities in the surrounding area have had to because their funding or their growth in funding has not been able to keep up or sustain all the programs or staffing that they have brought in. However, under my leadership and the support and leadership of the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Mrs. Monahan, and your support as a school committee, we have added nurses, four. We have actually doubled the size of our school psychologists force, we now have twelve. We have implemented summer school to address regression, student learning loss. We have expanded and added five pre-K classrooms. We brought back the director of grants to make sure that all the grants, which currently sits at about thirty-three million dollars in this community, in this school system, is being managed because that was something we had to reduce during COVID. We have an academic testing team. That plays an important role in the ability for special educators to teach their students because now the special educators do not need to do the testing. That falls on the shoulders of the academic testing team so our special educators can spend their time teaching students versus testing and writing reports in the classroom where they are needed, supporting all our kids. For the first time in over twenty-five years, you supported funding the school improvement plans. School improvement plans were last funded when I was an assistant principal back in two thousand and one. What we have not added, and something we may want to pursue down the road, we have not added a pre-K through one special educator coordinator. We have added registered behavior therapists. We brought back a director of facilities to make sure that the millions that we have invested in addition to the millions that the city has invested in our schools are well-maintained and aesthetically pleasing. Lunch recess assistants to monitor our students during recess and in the cafeteria. Speech and language pathologists to again, service our students knowing that they were gonna return from COVID with additional needs. Learning loss staff, we budgeted for ten. To make sure we maintain those small class sizes. And as pockets or bubbles of high enrollment in our schools or grades come up, we have staff budgeted should that occur. Instructional coaches, which we had to reduce during COVID, we have returned them all. And you have actually added an additional instructional coach this year in the FY twenty-four budget for the Mulcahy School. Middle school supports. Taunton High School supports. We are bringing back our libraries and aligning them with twenty-first century learning skills. Community facilitators to serve as that liaison between the guidance counselors in the homes and the school administrators in the homes. We finally have high-quality instructional materials in the hands of all our students. And under Mr. Barata's watch and our coordinators, we have implemented, I believe, three new high-quality instructional curriculums in a, in a matter of three to four years. I've already referenced the team chairs, adjustment counselors, who serve in similar but more robust roles to our adjustment, to our guidance counselors. And an attendance officer to make sure that students that, you know, may have disengaged during COVID, we're able to bring them back and make sure that they're safe and being cared for. So that is work that I have led, Mrs. Monahan, Mr. Barata have led, and work that you have supported to make sure that the eight thousand-plus students, again, with varying and very diverse needs, that we're able to meet and reach as many as possible. And I will not stand here and tell you the work is done. The work is only beginning. And we are only into year three of getting our kids back to where they were pre-pandemic times. I won't belabor you with grounds of facilities improvements. You amaze me with the support you provide me and my administration to make sure our kids have the best. And for those of you watching at home, no spoilers because I can't wait to leave this meeting and hear how our softball's doing, our softball team is doing this evening. And for the boys on the baseball team, you'll be receiving a note from Superintendent Cabral tomorrow as well. And last but not least, yeah, it is true, you can't do this work alone. One superintendent, leadership team, school committee members, we can't do this work alone. It takes a community of partners that are strategically aligned. And that, my friends, school committee members, concludes the FY twenty-four budget presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain. If you want us to refer to a specific slide, please ask us to refer to a specific slide so those at home can follow.
Thank you Superintendent Cabral. So can we get a motion to open public input?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, net opposed, so voted. Is there anyone here this evening for public input on the budget? So seeing, okay, seeing no one?
Motion being ordered to close the public input.
Motion made seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, net opposed, so voted? Okay, so now we go to questions.
Now we can open up to our school committee members for questions of the budget. Mrs. Fagan.
Assistant Cabral, on the, the previous, the slide that you had with what you were gonna do with the ESAR funds, right there, where do you find those things in the budget?
So, great question, Mrs. Fagan. Because the ESAR plan now is in year three, many of those positions, if you go at previous line items budgets from fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-one, you'll see where we added them as we moved them from the grant onto the budget. And some of these positions still remain on the grant. So school nurses, I believe we have not moved all our school nurses over to the budget yet, but school psychologists we have. yet, but school psychologists we have. Again, our assistant principals, we have moved on to the budget. The library media specialists, I believe have been moved on to the budget. So again, I can spend some time with you looking at previous fiscal year budgets, where you'll see all the notes as to when they were added onto the budget. But we can also provide you, if you'd like, at a later, after this meeting, we can provide you with a breakdown on who's still on grants and who's still on the budget.
How many of them are not filled right now?
I'm sorry?
How many of them are not filled right now?
There's some, right now, the only position that I can think of looking at this that we have not filled, we have not filled the pre-K through one special education coordinator.
Equity inclusion.
Equity inclusion, we are in the process of developing that job description and getting that approved, which you'll have the first reading this evening. And we have two remaining library positions vacant.
What about the Director of Social Emotional Learning? We don't have that yet.
That hasn't been filled, that has not been filled yet, but that will be, that will probably be posted again on seven one with the new fiscal, the start of the new fiscal year.
So when you say, again, when that that was the one, the person didn't take the job, right?
It's probably best that we not talk in specifics.
All right, I wasn't.
But that that position remains vacant.
And it has been all year, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we haven't posted it again since the vacancy occurred?
It has not been reposted, correct.
I'm just wondering how important you think it is when you don't repost it.
It's it's very important. And again, I believe it's, I believe it's difficult to fill, as we've learned, it's difficult to find qualified candidates when you post positions during the mid-year, because a lot of people who are in those type of roles are hesitant to leave the district that they're in. And in many cases, sometimes these positions, because they're mid-year, do need to be reposted again. So we want to make sure that when we do post it, we post it there in a time where we'll have a very wide pool of candidates.
So how many more years are left on this ESSA thing?
Fiscal grant, fiscal twenty-four, Mrs. Moynihan?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The ESSA, the ESSA grant expires fiscal twenty-four?
Fiscal twenty-four, September thirtieth.
So one, one more year.
Correct.
So, the concern is, Mr. Cabral, that how do we maintain that when we don't have that money?
So again, a lot of, a lot of the positions, again, custodians, for example, we brought on five additional custodians because of the pandemic, to make sure that our facilities were well-maintained, because we increased the amount of cleaning or the type of cleaning was very specific to COVID. So to make sure we had enough bodies in the building to carry out a very specific and detailed list that you and I helped collectively collectively bargain, we hired additional custodians. We may not need those five additional custodians when the grant runs out. And so many of these positions that have employees in on grants are one-year positions that clearly state they are grant-funded. What happens in many cases, when people retire, people move on, people in these grant positions apply for positions in the appropriations, so now they have that job security and they remain with us. So if we don't have the funding, if we don't have the funding to continue with the five additional custodians, and again, we are now three years removed COVID, five years removed COVID, we we are not gonna have the same level of cleaning, because we're not disinfecting based on the way we were during COVID. But we are still disinfecting, just not as regularly as we were required during COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent Cabral, through you, Madam Mayor. We had our budget priority workshop, and if my memory serves me correctly, we approved the reset rooms, middle school, elementary school, we voted to add the social workers, the strength and conditioning coach. I know there were two jobs that we were going to come up with job descriptions for, so we waited to vote on them. I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I wasn't provided with a copy of the minutes from the last meeting, nor did I find it in the tape. Not saying it's gonna happen, I get distracted while I'm watching. And line twelve, it's twelve-thirty, district-wide admin, the third line down, we have grant coordinator, support staff, other DW admin, total amount of thirty-four, one sixty-one, there's an increase of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And in the notes, it says, school committee, school committee approved priority, Director of DI and TPS Communication Coordinator. Was that approved at the last meeting, or are we voting on that?
So what we discussed, no, it's what we, great question. So what we discussed at the last meeting is that we're not gonna post those positions until the job descriptions are approved and we put the positions in the line item budget to identify and secure the funding, should they be approved. So that we don't have to come back and add funding to our budget, Mr. Viera? The money is being held. And if the positions do not get approved, then that frees up that funding for other purposes in the line item budget. So it's a placeholder.
Okay.
Okay? Depending on the wishes of the committee.
So if the wishes of the committee are to remove two hundred and twenty-six thousand from that and vote on it separately, is that appropriate or inappropriate?
I would, I would, my recommendation, having worn a finance hat, is to separate.
Sure.
No, but you ask great questions. I would separate the two. The bottom line tonight should not change. The amount that you are voting to approve on slide, my recommendation, again, you oversee policy and finance, my recommendation would be to approve that amount and deal the position separately.
Okay.
Okay, that way the bottom line does not change. And then, based on what we heard tonight, you may want to make a recommendation at a later time to use that funding to fund another priority.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Is that, is that clear?
Yes, absolutely.
Excuse me, I was making notes. Mr. Chairman?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So I think in the six years I served as a school committee member, this budget was the one that we have been most engrossed about. Many hours, days that we all committed to this budget, I think I can cite this verbatim, maybe not, but anyway, I think that, I know that what we have prepared here prepares us for beyond FY twenty-four. And as the superintendent mentioned, there are neighboring school districts that already in FY twenty-four have reduced hundreds of staff. And I am not fearful at all that Taunton will endure that. I know that we are confident and we are going to be able to maintain the staff. I don't have a crystal ball, but I know that having the superintendent and his team well-versed in the finance piece, I think is critical to a successful school district. So I feel very comfortable in the hundred and fourteen million, seven hundred and nineteen and two-dollar budget for FY twenty-four. So I close my remarks by saying that I'm very optimistic that FY twenty-four is gonna be a great year and that we have, money doesn't solve all the problems, but I know that we can manage the problems, and I know we will successfully do that together with the superintendent and his team as a committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none?
Now, I believe the appropriate step, I believe, would be a motion to accept the proposed budget in for fiscal twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and fourteen million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand and two dollars.
Second on that?
I can't make a motion.
We did, we just. Mr. Viera, why don't you say the entire motion, please?
Motion to accept the one hundred and fourteen million, seven nineteen, there's the other two, apply to four school.
On a roll call vote, please. Is there a second?
Motion in second.
Sorry, Mayor.
On a roll call, please, thank you. Mr. Philofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the superintendent's report, but I would ask if the committee either wants to do that and go out of order or go out of order before that, because we do have a guest with us, I think that's gonna do a presentation. And in the spirit of not making her wait.
I'm more than happy to make a motion to go out of order if it's appropriate, acceptable to the rest of the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not opposed, so voted? I don't think so.
Okay.
So we can jump right to new business.
Deliver a message, I'm gonna be running a little late, okay? I'll be there by eight.
Which is the Taunton Public Virtual Academy proposal.
May I introduce, may I introduce Isa?
Superintendent, would you like to introduce our guest?
So I'd like to welcome Mrs. Rodriguez to the table, or to the podium, excuse me. So as the committee is aware, earlier in the year, not exactly sure what we call when, but we made the school committee aware that one of our goals to ensure that our families, our students had multiple options, aligned with twenty-first century learning opportunities to access education, we went on the, or took on the task of developing a virtual school. So picture this as a brick-and-mortar school that is run virtually, utilizing many of the best practices and lessons learned during COVID. So I am proud to report that we submitted, Mrs. Rodriguez submitted the application, working with numerous stakeholders in the community, conducted a survey, which she'll discuss, and it reminded me of the dissertation process or my thesis process when I was in graduate school, where you know you're gonna get a lot of feedback. And the state of Massachusetts now has two years of data. So knowing that the state now has two years of data, schools that submitted applications prior to time were not, were not given or made to perform as rigorous of a task as Mrs. Rodriguez had to perform with the support of our leadership team. So one, I want to commend her for an excellent report, I want to commend her for an outstanding application and for her work to address the areas identified by DESI, because I believe what we are providing is a high-quality instructional program. So without belaboring the fact, I'll allow Mrs. Rodriguez to discuss what the program will look like. I also want to proudly state and steal a little bit of her thunder that we have collectively impact bargained this with the Taunton Education Association, and we do have a tentative agreement that is being written up and will be signed once we've had a chance to both review. So we are moving forward with our next steps, which is, one, to bring you up to up to date and where we are with the process. After tonight's meeting, I would ask that if all your questions and you are satisfied with the presentation, that a motion be made to accept the proposal and to authorize myself and Mrs. Rodriguez to upload the application to the Department of Education tomorrow, because it is due June twelfth, so that Taunton Public Schools, we implement its very own and its very first virtual high school servicing students in eight, in grades eight through twelve. So Mrs. Rodriguez, Rodriguez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, Madam Mayor, Dr. DeMello, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Cabral. I'm really excited to be here. For those of you, there's a few new faces that may not know me. My name's Elizabeth Rodriguez, most people know me as Isa. I've been in the district for, I think, over twenty-five years, just like my father before me. I'm a member of the community, my students have successfully gone through Taunton Public Schools, and I remain here because I believe strongly in what this city can do for its children. So when Superintendent Cabral asked me to work on this project, I thought about it for a long time, and I got really excited, because I see it as a way to prepare our students as a way that they can successfully face their future, not our future that we had, but their future. So I'm very excited to present this. And I'd like to start just by giving you a very brief overview of the different kinds of virtual schools that exist in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. On the left, we have Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual Schools or CMVSs, and this is for, these are separate entities that don't belong to districts that make an application to the states, it's guided by regs, and it's run by a board of trustees. And once the school is granted the certificate to be run as a virtual school, any student in the state of Massachusetts can go there. Well, how is the school funded? It's funded by the sending districts, just like the school choice schools. And over on the right, you have what newly came, DESI presented a couple of years, it was only two years ago, they said that districts could now create what's called a single district virtual school or an SDVS. This is different, because it's a district school, it's only for students within our district, they have to live in Taunton. And it's, as Superintendent Cabral said, it's an additional district school in every single sense of the word, except for the bricks and mortar. So everything that we have in every school, the school has to have it, and we have to, we have to make sure we plan for it. And how does, what's the general process? Well, the district submits a proposal, DESI provides us some feedback, they don't approve, you do, because the community has to decide, and the local school committee has to approve it. I also want to mention that there's all different kinds of models of these types of schools out there. And I've done quite a bit of research on not just what exists in Massachusetts, but throughout the country. And you can have everything from, you hire your own teachers and you do live synchronous teaching every day, all day, to schools that are a hundred percent asynchronous with an outside vendor. So there's all different types of model, but I took it upon us to decide what's best for Taunton families and students. I also want to share with you some of the key reasons why would the district would even want to consider this. I mean, some of them might seem obvious to you, but I'd like to point them out just the same. Well, first of all, there's definitely a high demand across the state. There are only two Commonwealth Virtual Schools, you might know them as TECA or Greater Commonwealth Virtual School, formerly known as Greenfield. They have maximum enrollments, as these schools do, and as we would too, but there are wait lists, so even the students that want to go there can't necessarily go. Obviously, there's an increased concern with COVID and other health concerns, so there's this concern about the physical safety of our kids and their family members. There are also increasing concerns with bullying, sometimes perceived bullying, there's definitely increases in anxiety and social anxiety, and both of those lines that you see show us that there's a demand for our students to have increased psychological safety. Students don't have an increased psychological safety, they cannot lower their affective filter, and they cannot learn. It's also a means to provide, from a different perspective, advanced learning opportunities. You may have some students that we have right now in our brick-and-mortar schools, but they want more or different opportunities, and they're able to, and they like being able to do them asynchronously, and they're okay with that. It's not for everybody, but some kids want to do that, and this would allow us to do that. There's also clearly community interest, which is demonstrated by a survey that I'll talk about. And certainly, every administrator in the district has had conversations with parents and community members, and sometimes even students, about asking about, what can I do for virtual schooling? It's also, and this is a really important one for us, it's an additional means for the district to personalize and individualize instruction for different learning preferences. And we talk a lot about student choice, we talk about trying to personalize education. This is a different platform, a different school, a way for students to be educated. And I want to mention right up front that it's not for every student. We estimate, and research shows that it's only good for a small percentage of students, but we're trying to meet the needs of all students, every student in every school, and this is one way that we can do that. I also wanted to share with you a case study that I came across. When I started looking into the Massachusetts Single District Virtual Schools, well, they've only been around, when I started looking into this, they were only a year old, and now they're two years old. But after the first year of their existence, which was the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I found a Harvard case study, they did partner with DESI on this, and they tried to find out, well, how effective was this? You know, it's difficult to measure absolutely everything, but there was a small case study, and the findings I found to be really unexpected, so I want to share them with you. First of all, I found that there was much greater ease of an instructor's ability to respond to and support students who were struggling in the moment, whether it's through a chat feature, or whether it's through smaller class sizes where they're talking, whether it's office hours, they're able to really interact with the kids. A teacher in a live classroom with lots of different needs in front of him or her may not be able to get to the student in the moment that they're struggling. The next one's also very important, and I find very important in this, is that many of the schools have finally acknowledged the research that shows that our teenagers need more sleep and they're not getting it, and sometimes the schedule that we have don't meet their needs. So by, some of them have a little bit later of a start, and even not having to get dressed, get out of the house, get transportation, walk to school, catch a bus, allows them to sleep in a little bit more and still be ready to school with a little bit more sleep. And now, when it came down to talking to the students where the rubber really meets the roads, why did the students feel more engaged in a single district virtual school? There were four themes for students, the health and safety benefits, they reported improved focus and time management, which may sound, you know, the opposite of what one might expect, but that's what the students. the students found. And they had a very strong sense of community. And I know in a, in an environment where we're talking about students with anxiety and they need better social interactions, you might think the opposite, but these students actually reported an improved sense of community because they belonged to a school even though they were home learning, and they belonged to the community school as well. And also reported great relationships with their teachers. And it's just ease of access. Students can really be anywhere when they're accessing online learning. We did have a planning advisory, of course. I wasn't on my own. We had a group of people that met regularly, and we want to make sure that we were meeting community needs, meeting district needs, and meeting district priorities. We had to make decisions together on what would be proposed. And one of the first things that we did was make sure that a potential proposal for a district virtual school aligned with our strategic objectives. So if you take a moment to look at them, if you have any questions about how this might align, please let me know, but we did find that it aligned very nicely to our objective of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and planning, certainly to professional culture and climate, our strategic objective of management, budget, and operations, and also family engagement and community partnerships. Now, before I talk about the details of the proposal, I would like to, I would just like to offer a little bit of clarification on our existing options because I found that when discussing this, even with, even with people within the district, I found out that people maybe had questions or weren't really clear on what we have right now. I talk about virtual, and they say, well, we have a virtual program. So I just wanted to give you a full, a few bullets on some of our existing alternative options for students, in case you don't know, or if anybody watching at home doesn't know. Taunton Public Schools currently has Taunton Virtual Instruction Program, also known as TVIP. But TVIP should be considered and is a short-term tutoring option that's primarily for students with medical concerns. Okay? A student might be having treatment for a month, has to be in a hospital. We're obligated to continue their education. This goes through the Special Education Office, and TVIP is one option to provide that education on a short-term basis. It does provide tutoring and individualized guidance, and it is a program, a short-term program. It is not a school. Okay? The second alternative we have is the Taunton Alternative High School, which I think you're all very familiar with. Now, this is a brick and mortar school, as you know, in the old Kohanet Building, but it's a credit recovery school, and that makes it very different from our existing options, including Taunton High School. It's focused primarily on students in 11th and 12th grade, and it has a non-traditional in-person schedule of 11:30 a.m. to 6 p.m. So those, again, I think important just to clarify that so that you can understand the full scope of what we have and also how this is different and could be different. Now, in the next slide, I think it's slide seven, I wanted, I want to give you just an idea of what's been done over the last year in order to come to where we are here today, June 7th. So what had to be done? What's the process of creating a brand-new school in this district for virtual? Well, first, I had to do some research on all the existing models, as I mentioned. There are seven existing single district virtual schools in the state of Massachusetts in addition to the two Commonwealth virtual schools. We started the year off by making a planning advisory, a group that represented the various areas of education so that we could have ongoing consultation, prioritize, make decisions. We also had to engage key stakeholders. For example, I interviewed many students about their experiences or their desire and what they thought the school should have. This is for the students, so student input was very important. We also were required to make sure that we demonstrated demand in the community. The DESI requires that in the application, and we demonstrated demand in the community by a survey that we conducted back in October of 2022. And the survey asked parents for reasons, input, and some thoughts, age groups of their students, where the students were going to be next year. And that was key to, you know, us launching the details of the proposal. We then spent the next few months completing the application, which is the proposal. We had to follow the guidelines from DESI. Now, if you start looking closely at the timeline, it becomes important. So the proposal went to DESI in April. A few weeks later, in May, they provided us with some detailed feedback. And I just want to reiterate what Superintendent Cabral said. We were lucky. We got extra scrutinized by the Department of Education because they had the two years of experience with the first single district virtual schools. When those schools submitted applications, there were certainly guidelines, but they hadn't had the experience yet. So we were a little different than all the rest, and we got quite a bit of feedback from the state. But it was important feedback because it helped us to think a little more concretely about some of the details, and so the proposal was adapted based on the input. It wasn't required, but because we want to start a stable school, I'm going to quote Superintendent Cabral, and say, "We want to start slow to go fast. We want to be strong. We want to be stable. We want to make sure we're on the mark with meeting the needs of the students and the community." We, we addressed the concerns of the feedback, and that's the proposal that you have in your hands and your packet. Meanwhile, I also want to mention in May, as Superintendent Cabral said, we were able to successfully have impact bargain with the union for those positions. And I also want to just thank Dr. DeMello, Mr. Laura, and Mrs. Fagan for assisting in that process. That was very helpful to us as well. And so, still in this tight timeline, I'm here today to present this proposal to you, which I hope you've had a chance to take a look at. And with a positive school committee vote tonight, this will be submitted to the state with a statement of assurances by no later than this coming Monday, June 12th. And with that, we will have a brand-new district school for the 2022, I'm sorry, 23-24 school year. In the next slide, I wanted you to also be aware of what some of the driving considerations were. This isn't just fill out an application, see what they say, and, you know, let's go with this. There were certain things that drove us that were very important that had to stay on our minds in moving forward with this proposal. First of all, we wanted to provide the highest quality online teaching possible. Yes, we all went through COVID. All the teachers, all the students, all the parents and families had to go through that. But providing high, high-quality online instruction is different. So it's very important for us to recognize what those things are and know that we're dealing with something different here. Obviously, we have to ensure equitable access to services. A school is a school is a school, so we need to make sure that everyone has access. And we also know, and this is something I'd like to point out to you, we also know that because this type of learning is only really appropriately matched to a small percentage of students, we know that we're not going to get like a cross-section of students. We're not going to have a bell curve of grades, for example. We're going to have individualized mix of students, so results will be different. And with that, we know that we have to be prepared to address social-emotional learning implications for this type of school. As Superintendent Cabral has said in so many different ways, the district is addressing that, but this is one additional way. But within this virtual school, we need to understand the type of student that we could potentially get and who it's designed for. And that has to be a balanced environment, especially for students with anxiety. We also want to make sure it's the best model for sustaining a positive culture. We want this to last. We can't do that without a positive culture for both students and staff. And the only way you can maximize engagement and the engagement process, you know, virtually is very different, but it's absolutely necessary for student success. We need to make sure we, we have the model that's going to maximize that. And we, we've learned, again, we've had the benefit to learn from other schools, we know that embedding a system for attendance all day long is going to be critical. And obviously, we need to ensure we meet the requirements for high-quality educators that meet the needs of our community. Yes, we can follow all these guidelines. We can look at all the models. We can do our best to make sure we meet the needs, but we need to keep that in mind, that we're in our community, and we're going to be different than other communities. Next, I'd like to show you our mission and vision. As any school, we have to have a mission and vision. Anyone that knows me knows that I'm very mission-oriented, and this is extremely important that we remain faithful to this. I can say without a doubt that our mission of Taunton Public Virtual Academy aligns with the district's mission, obviously. However, as a smaller school with the first year a maximum enrollment of 75, meeting the needs of very unique individuals, I think we have the opportunity to be a little bit innovative in a disruptive kind of way. By that, I mean in a positive way. We have a different platform. We can do some innovative things. So our mission is to have students reach their full academic potential by removing those barriers which we discussed and fostering a culture of innovation, collaboration, and perseverance. Our vision is to build a progressive virtual learning community that meets holistic and balanced with individual learning needs through continual co-creation with students, families, teachers, administrators, school leaders, and community stakeholders. This co-creation is really important because we have to meet the needs of the individuals that we have in front of us. And our values are trust, growth, empathy, exploration, and resilience. Now, to give you a general overview of the proposal, just very generally, high level, based on the data that we received from the family survey we gave back in October, we are proposing to you a virtual school for grades eight through 12. That's where the greatest need was demonstrated. We also want to keep, be mindful of the fact that we, we know that there's nothing that is going to substitute live synchronous instruction. So although we need a mixed model of synchronous and asynchronous learning, we know that maximizing live instruction is very important. We'll have some challenges with that, so we need to partner with a strong vendor that's going to provide us active, access to elective courses. And I can't help but mention, those of you that know me, that they will have foreign languages as well as electives. And if we need them, core courses. So that's the general overview. Now, from the live synchronous teaching perspective, we are proposing that we use our already-existing high-quality curriculum. And for that, we propose four core teachers, one special educator, a school counselor, a principal, and all other district staff can be shared. Now, for the asynchronous part, through our vendor, we'll have access to electives. The vendor provides the teacher of record. The vendor provides the curriculum, which of course is aligned to state standards. They provide content coaching, which is a kind of tutoring. And they also provide a liaison for ongoing communication with us so we're always knowing exactly the status of our students in our asynchronous courses. And they also provide us with data analysis and meetings so that we can make sure we're measuring how well our students are doing in the asynchronous courses. The school schedule, we're proposing a tier two. This is a later start than Taunton High School, which will allow students to have a later wake-up time. They'll have six periods a day. Within their schedule, they'll have a combination of both live synchronous teaching and asynchronous teaching. And this will allow them to have access to all of the wonderful extracurricular activities that Taunton High School has to offer. And also, I just want to end by stating that, of course, we are, we'll be able to provide all required special education services, all ESL services. Our family and community liaisons will be a very important part of this to maintain connection with the students and families at home. They'll have access to nursing and to meals. We will have a community room where we can have any type of gathering. We can have meetings. We can have in-person socialization, and where families can do pickups and drop-offs of materials, and we can also gather for field trips. And those are the highlights, so I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll start with a question. So you stated that it would be eighth grade to 12th grade, I believe?
Eighth to 12th is correct, yes.
And a maximum of 75 students for the first year?
Yes.
So I'm just kind of trying to figure out if you have, would that mean one of each class, one eight, one nine, one 10?
Not necessarily. It would depend on the individual course needs of the students, and we may have more eighth grade but fewer 10th grade. So we really want to individualize. So obviously, we want to use our live teachers to the maximum extent possible, and then fill in electives with the asynchronous courses.
Okay. So yeah, so I'm kind of wondering if you've got, you know, a few students in eighth grade that are at the same level as maybe some of the students in 10th grade. Do you switch them around? Does it matter what grade? Or do you just put them in the class where they're going to thrive the most or that challenges them the most?
Okay, well, I can give you two examples, just to make it clear. For example, we'll have an eighth-grade English class, and there'll be eighth graders in that eighth-grade English class. Okay? Hopefully, that class would be one that would have a live instructor. But you might have an algebra class, and in that algebra class for math, you may have a student in any grade that needs that algebra class. So that could be very much like Taunton High School. You may have certain courses that could be mixed grades. Does that help?
Yes, and that's kind of what I was trying to get at. If there's students at different levels, how do you meet all of their needs?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when would you anticipate this would start?
August 31st.
All right, I'll let the rest of the committee jump in. Mrs. Fagan?
Just a quick question. I just realized this. I know you're going on a tier-two schedule, but eight to 2:45. When you play sports and they're going for an away game, they're leaving right after two, how do you rectify that difference?
Yes, and we, we, we thought long and hard about that. We are confident that for students that want to leave their, their school day, which technically goes to 2:45, because every student is going to have some degree of asynchronous courses, we will do our best to tailor that. So if they want to leave at 2 o'clock to go to the baseball team, that's when they would have a scheduled asynchronous course, but they can do it another time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Enos?
My question's probably directed to Superintendent Cabral. The, I always had a concern on the cherry sheets, the offset, and the school choice is, how many of that school choice number right now that leaves the city attend virtual schools right now?
Hi, Mrs. Rodriguez, Mrs. Rodriguez, I know we went over the numbers. I don't have my sheet in front of me. Do you have it?
I do, yes. So right now, at the high school level, which was eight through 12, at the two Commonwealth virtual schools, we have 51 students. That's right. And students who are homeschooled, right now at the high school level, we have 40. And that's not counting the student, other students who are in other districts.
I thought you'd be happy.
That did. Doesn't take much.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez, for your presentation. Just to be clear, the students are going to have access to the same curriculum, including the high quality, as the Taunton Public School students have currently?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. George?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know you said this program would be for a specific population of students, so I'm kind of wondering like what the referral process would be and the decision process, and which students would most likely benefit?
That's a great question. So essentially, the type of student would, would be, fall into certain categories, and it could be an either-or-and, okay? So those students who really need the psychological safe, increased psychological safety, increased physical safety because of medical concerns, or students who really want to excel and take additional courses. They do have to have enough self-governance so that they can manage a virtual online environment, even though they should have an adult partner that would help them and guide them as well. So that's sort of the profile of the student that this is designed for. It's not designed for every student. Not every student, as we know, can thrive in a virtual environment. And the referral process will be similar, not the exact same, but similar as the alternative high school. So the current guidance counselors, so it would be the seventh-grade guidance counselors in the middle schools and the high school guidance staff, they understand the students, they have the history of the students, they will be in contact and make those referrals. And for the initial referrals, it would be now, you know, at the end of the year through the summer, and then in an ongoing... now, you know, at the end of the year through the summer, and then in an ongoing way, because we can get different enrollments, will be considerations for new enrollments during the term. So our terms will match the high school terms. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, being on the TA Subcommittee with my colleagues, Mr. Laura and Secretary Fagan, I have a little bit more insight. And I guess one of the concerns that came up immediately, which was answered many times, is the attendance and the all-day tracking ability of attendance. Because as we know, we experienced through the COVID years, the attendance would be on and there was no one in the picture, and who knows where that student was. So, that's very, very critical. And one comment I do have is that I also was privy to the feedback that was received from DESI. And I do hope you have copyright on all of your material, because it seems like you're inventing the wheel for DESI. And I say that not lightheartedly, because as you've said, they are in the infancy of developing virtual schools, and I, I think they had nothing to base it upon. And I think what your response and commitment to this endeavor should be copyright, because I think they're gonna take that and go into the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So please make sure we're protected on that, Superintendent and Ms. Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. So, we, we saw virtual learning during COVID, and we, you know, talk about learning loss and all the challenges of that virtual learning. I think there's gonna be a concern among, you know, parents and students that this would, this type of virtual learning would kind of mirror what they had in COVID. Can you maybe get in front of that and address those concerns? Because we all are sitting here saying how our kids need to recover from having virtual learning for that long period of time.
That's a great question. So, I'll start off by saying we already know upfront that this is, research says this is only good for a very small percentage, maybe one to two percent of kids that thrive in this environment. This will not answer the needs of every child. This will answer some of the needs, which is why we are relying on the referral process through guidance, because the school counselors have a pretty holistic view of a child and know where, you know, the students that might benefit for this and some that might not. Some people think that, well, I'm not happy with this, so I'll go virtual learning. But we've all experienced the fact that not everyone is successful there. So it's very important for us to make a good match on that. So we know upfront it's for small. That's why we proposed our initial maximum enrollment to be seventy-five students. The other thing is that during COVID, everyone was forced into this virtual environment, whether we liked it or not. Some teachers might have liked it, some teachers might not have. Some kids might have liked it, some parents might have, you know, people liked it and didn't like it. Some people, we learned a small percentage of students, and teachers did thrive. But there are also national guidelines for online teaching and learning. So, it's not COVID all over again. It's us understanding what makes online engagement different, what instructional practices have to be different. So it is, it is a little different than something that we were all forced into. And it's not, again, for everyone.
Thank you. And then lastly, is there, and this might be for Superintendent Cabral, but the kind of startup, is there a startup cost for this? Is there gonna be an additional funding request? How is it funded?
So, I think what Mr. Enos was alluding to, every student that we're able to bring back either, was it, either homeschooled. So we want to target those families and offer them this opportunity. And also, students who are attending the two virtual schools of Massachusetts, if we can retain some of those students, that's actually gonna generate additional chapter seventy dollars, which will help offset this cost. So the cost should be, the cost should be relatively minimal, because we've identified five to six educators to run this program. And we actually, with this program, we actually bargained larger class sizes. So we'll, we'll be able to bring in more students, because it's a virtual setting. So, is, if, I believe, similar to our chapter seventy-four programs, this may also generate some additional revenue while providing parents and students with something that's very important in education, that you often will get an opportunity for, which is choice.
So, so at this time, you don't think there's gonna be a cost? Because you're talking about bringing contractors, I think, to do certain classes?
There will be, there will be, there will be a cost. But the cost, we, we believe the cost will probably be somewhere, I believe we did quick math, it would be somewhere around four to five hundred thousand to start this program.
Okay. And is that funded, so I think you said in August thirty-first start, so this coming school year, so?
So this is one of the programs that we're gonna roll out utilizing our ESSA dollars, and then roll into the appropriation.
ESSA, and then you're gonna roll it into the budget?
Into fiscal twenty-five, we would anticipate rolling this into the budget. So we're gonna utilize our ESSA dollars as startup funds, and then once we get the program up and running, we have the enrollment stabilized, move the, move the positions into the FY twenty-five budget.
I have one other question. You mentioned seventy-five students. Is that a hard number?
Yes, that is what we filed with the state. So if at any point in time, so for the first two years, just using the, the information that we had, we estimated a maximum enrollment of seventy-five, especially with the staff that we proposed. If at any time we wanted to change that, we can submit an amendment with DESI. Of course, we'd have to analyze our staffing and all that again.
And so, so I guess maybe to financing salaries, is there any concern about rolling five hundred thousand dollars into the budget, or maybe Superintendent Cabral, in one fiscal year?
No, I would not be concerned, because again, the students that we're bringing onboard will count as part of the October one report, generating additional chapter seventy dollars. So the program should be cost-neutral, or like the chapter seventy-four program, generate additional chapter seventy-four dollars.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. George?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Do those students and those other programs currently have to pay for the programs? Or no, those are free as well? All right, thank you.
Actually, the city, the city of Taunton pays.
Right.
Through school choice.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, I think the request was for a vote on this tonight, Superintendent?
So, it would be someone to make a motion?
Motion to approve the virtual school.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to, actually, we need a motion to go back to the regular order of business?
Motion to return the regular order of business.
Motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. And we can go to the superintendent's report.
So there are three quick items in the superintendent's report. So I'm very, I'm very proud to announce that the National Science for Teaching Association and the Carnegie Corporation will be featuring Taunton's work in the field of science. So I am delighted to share an important update and our strategic initiative to enhance the quality of science education throughout the Taunton Public School District. Between May eighth and May nineteenth, we welcomed NESTA and the Carnegie Corporation, the Taunton High School, and the Benjamin A. Freeman Middle School, who were comprehensively, comprehensively observed for their science class, their science, our science classrooms in action. Our science curriculum has gained significant attention recently, largely thanks to the remarkable efforts of two esteemed educators and under the direction of now Dr. Elizabeth Palowski. So we want to congratulate Dr. Elizabeth Palowski. And I think there's also a chairperson that we want to congratulate as well. So congratulations. So Dr. Palowski, Anne Gugelmo, seventh-grade teacher at Freeman, and Tanya Bransky, an eighth-grade teacher at Taunton High School, have been leading our work in the, in the field of STEM and science with the new Open SIED curriculum. Their mastery of implementing the cutting-edge science curriculum, Open SIED, has earned them national recognition as experts in this field. Given their impressive contributions, NESTA has decided to film a professional learning series in their classrooms. This footage will also serve a crucial role in educating, in educating institutions about the importance of curriculum-based professional learning. Notably, this endeavor links directly to the Nexus Project, which had, which we have diligently worked in, worked on for the last three years. In the spirit of gathering comprehensive perspectives, the Carnegie Foundation took the initiative to capture the viewpoints of local stakeholders about implementing these high-quality instructional materials, specifically Open SIED. A diverse group, compromising a six parents, six administrators, seven teachers, and sixteen students were interviewed, offering valuable insights. And for the, for the critical task of filming and editing this project, we entrusted the professional team of Benchfly. Their expertise in capturing the whole group, teacher instruction, and small group interactions is unparalleled in the field, and we could not be more confident of their abilities to showcase our efforts in the best possible light. So I just want to express my utmost gratitude to all the educators who helped make this and helped highlight the outstanding work taking place in our school community. Next, just want to mention that for the first time ever in junior achievement, and since I've been superintendent in Taunton Public Schools, we have emphasized financial literacy at the elementary school levels. Junior achievement, which typically would come in once a week over an eight-week period, they decided to do something a little different. They had a JA day, an entire morning, afternoon, educating the entire student body, although we did have some last-minute cancellations. So not all the students got to participate, to my dismay. But overall, it was an outstanding showing, as twenty-five community volunteers came into this building and provided five hundred students with the, and shared with five hundred students the importance of financial literacy. So the day began with a volunteer kickoff and a breakfast, which was held here in the library. And we also presented our amazing community partner, Bristol County Savings Bank, who have made countless donations to the Taunton Public Schools, and they continue to fund JA and support JA, not only with monetary contributions, but they also provide, you know, human capital. They put their, they put many hours into providing support in our classrooms. So it was just a great day. I cannot thank Jeff Pelletier and his leadership team, and the many volunteers from Bristol County Savings Bank, Santander Bank, First Citizens, Federal Credit Union, and Habbo One for hosting an outstanding event, which I believe will be the first of many to take place, not only in Taunton, but in southeastern Massachusetts. And last but not least, just wanted to make the committee aware that shortly, or rough, shortly after the school year ends, the MSBA will be back in Taunton to wrap up the accelerated repair project at the Galligan Elementary School. That concludes my report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. I guess next is Subcommittee, I'm sorry, TPS Teacher Vacancy Report. Oh. I'm sorry. Looking at the wrong place. It's the bifocals. Staffing report, see enclosure?
Receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. TPS Teacher Vacancy Report.
Any questions or comments? I know I did speak with Dr. Butts today. She mentioned that due to the May first posting, I believe we had a hundred and sixty-three vacancies, which is typical for a district our size, because there are many positions that need to be reposted. And I was very specific in asking, were we able to make a dent in any of these positions, because they were also included. So, the number that I received today, I believe she said, going into the final week of school, we're down to sixty-three vacancies, which is a low number for this, at this time of year, in anticipation for the summer months.
Receive and place on file. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Field trip requests.
I would ask that there be a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Finance and Law Subcommittee. Who's taking this? Is that, that be you, Mrs. Enos?
That'll be me, unfortunately, yes. Mr. Viera does a great job, so I'll try to fill his shoes. We met at five forty-five PM tonight. It was myself and Dr. DeMello. First item was the school activities report, where we voted to replenish the Elizabeth Pole in Taunton High School for four fifty-four fourteen and fifty-four thousand eight seventy-one ninety-one respectively. We also had a bid opening, or a potential bid opening, for the Mamet Community Health Center construction. They voted to extend it for two weeks due to, to attract some additional subcontractor bids. The third one was awarding cafeteria bids. They awarded groceries to Thurston Foods. They are the current vendor as well. Produce went to Nassif Produce, and the bread went to Kalise Bakery. The fourth item was the disposal of surplus items, which was marching band uniforms that were back from nineteen ninety-six. It was like a twenty-count. We voted to dispose of the uniforms in the proper way. We also voted for conference reimbursement for, let's see what that is, Safe Roots. We voted, we voted to re, the reimbursement for the conference reimbursements of the individuals. The, I'm sorry, I skipped on the donation of the safety vest. We voted to accept the donation of the safety vest from the organization, and they just asked that they get some pictures of the people using them. Let's see. Mrs. Moynihan presented a school activity accounts update. We got in the audit. We, we adopted the recommendations that was presented a few weeks ago. As far as the bill warrants, we approved the FY twenty-three warrant for one million eight thirty-three two eight fifty, thirty-six. As far as the FY twenty-two warrant, I'd like that voted on in the full committee, because Dr. DeMello had an issue with it. And as far as the facilities report, Mrs. Moynihan told us that sixty, eighty percent of the updates, I guess the facility dude was regarding school department property. And we adjourned at approximately six PM.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted?
I would just like, I would just like to make a motion on the FY twenty-two warrant that we approved the thirteen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollar payment by FY twenty-two to Sahad, Hagan Sahadi, for they're the ones who performed the school activities report.
Motion and second on discussion?
Is, is there any particular reason why we're still paying FY twenty? Is that common practice, or?
It actually is common practice. We have not received a hard close date from the treasurer or the city auditor. And because this audit was relative to fiscal twenty-two, it should be paid with fiscal twenty-two dollars.
Okay. Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Mr. Enos will also do the rules committee?
Yes, we met, we met at, it was myself and Mr. Palowski. We met at five twenty, five fifteen, I guess it was, five fifteen. Present was Mr. Reposa, Dr. Butts, and Superintendent Cabral. We met on the food truck position, where we discussed the job description. We voted to move it to a third reading tonight. As well as the, do you want to do these separately, or do you just want to?
The other one was the communications coordinator was moved with a minor change to the first reading. And the director of diversity, equity, and inclusion was moved to a first reading with the necessary changes.
Is there a motion to accept the report?
Well, I'll let you speak.
I, I would ask that we vote on each item separately.
Okay. So can we have a motion to vote on the first item?
It was the food truck operator.
Mo.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, absolutely. Motion to vote on food truck coordinator to, to first or second reading?
Third.
Third reading, third reading.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes.
None opposed? So voted?
Yep, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The next one was the communication coordinator.
Motion to bring the communication coordinator to a first reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed?
And the last one's the director of diversity, equity, and inclusion was to a first reading.
So that was, that has four yeses. Does that, yeah, okay. I'm not gonna get to vote at this point, so, okay. Okay.
The director of, someone else might go, director of diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Motion to bring the director of diversity, equity, and inclusion, coordinate, director, excuse me, not coordinate, to a first reading.
Can I second it?
Second.
Motion made.
On discussion.
Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded. On discussion?
I still sat, have some issues with some of the language in here. I just, I'm just not comfortable with it, because I don't know what some of these things, I don't know what they mean by authentic collaboration. There was another, I'm sorry, this isn't the one I had. I left mine at home. But it's just, some of the verbiage in here, to me, becomes, oh, this one here, high tolerance for ambiguity. I don't know what that means. I find that statement in itself ambiguous. So I, I don't understand what, what some of this stuff is, because it's, it's along the lines of not being a definitive thing you're looking for, but something that's kind of up in the air that can go either way. I'm, I'm just not comfortable with the language. I can't vote for this one.
So I would welcome some suggested language, so that we can return it to Dr. Butts and make the changes. I would also suggest if any member, in addition to Mrs. Fagan, if you want to meet with myself, Dr. Butts, and review the job description, we can spend some time talking about it in a, in a, in a way that's, unless the board members want to go through it now, we can spend some time reviewing it and answering your questions, clarifying definitions, and making sure that the language is coherent, so that everyone sitting at the table understands what they will be voting on.
I will say, came out of the committee with a recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor right now and seconded. So the committee can move forward with that motion and vote on it, or withdraw it and do something else, but there's a motion on the floor right now.
I can't.
Your motion, Mr. Vera?
It's your motion.
I'm fine with voting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so can you just repeat the motion, so?
The, the motion was to bring the diversity, equity, and inclusion director to a first reading.
Correct.
Okay, motion made, and that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
To oppose, motions not carried. Okay. Okay, we will now go to the Rules Committee. All set?
Yes.
Unit A Teachers Subcommittee, Mrs. Fagan?
Oh, teachers met on May 30, and after some lengthy discussions, we were able to reach an agreement, is it a tentative agreement, Mr. Cabral, right now? T tentative agreement with, with the teachers about the Taunton Virtual Academy. So that's what the, the conversation was about.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. We can, we already did new business. Unfinished business is just action item update. Do we, there is?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make my colleagues aware that Long Range Planning and Public Property Subcommittee would be meeting to discuss the acquisition of real property and other items that we have in our own business.
Did you decide on a date yet? What time? Okay.
So that will be posted as a meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Is that unfinished?
No. New business?
Is it, I don't, yeah, but it's new, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, could I ask a question, please?
We can, you can ask a question, but we can't have a conversation about it?
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so new business is all set. Unfinished business, is there anything on the action item update? Nothing. There is no press here this evening, and can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.